All right, thank you and welcome to our Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, regular business meeting at the East Bay Mud Board of Directors. Due to COVID-19, in accordance with the latest Alameda County Health Order, the Governor's Executive Order N. 2920, which suspends portions of the Brown Act, this meeting will be conducted remotely. In compliance with said orders, a physical location has not been provided for this meeting. These measures will only apply during the period in which state or local public health officials have imposed or recommended social distancing. The Finance Administration Committee met this morning and will report out under item 11. Also, the board participated in the fiscal year 22 of fiscal year 23 Budget Workshop Number Two, where staff reviewed the prepared fiscal years 2022 and 2023 biennial budgets, proposed rates, operating and capital priorities, and staffing. The proposed fiscal year 2022 system capacity charge and wastewater capacity fee, and provided follow-up information from the January 26th, 2021 Budget Workshop Number One. All directors, including myself, are participating via teleconference. Roll call, please. Madam Secretary.
Director Coleman.
Present.
Director Katz.
Present.
Director McIntosh.
Here.
Director Mellon.
Present.
Director Patterson? You're on mute.
Present.
Director Young is going to join us shortly, and President Lenny.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, for liberty-
For peace and justice for all.
Having too many voices discombobulated, throwing me off. Sorry about that. There are no announces from closed session. We'll go to public comment. If members of the public wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom. Comments on non-agenda items will be heard at the beginning of this meeting, right next, that is. Comments on agenda items will be heard when the item is up for consideration. When prompted, please state your name, affiliation if applicable, and topic. The secretary will call each speaker in the order received. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. However, I have the discretion to amend this time based on the number of speakers. The secretary will track time and inform each speaker when his or her allotted time has concluded. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers for public comment?
We have six speakers for public comment, and the first speaker is Suzanne Fox. I'm going to unmute your phone. You should be able to turn on your mic. Okay, and your three minutes will start now.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted, yes.
Okay, yeah. I had contacted Marguerite about this this week, and she very promptly got back to me. It's about the dead and dying moderate pines around the San Pablo Reservoir. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but about a third of the trees appear to be dead. And given that we're having very severe fire seasons and now apparently yearly lightning storms in the summer, it seemed like something that needed to get addressed fairly quickly. Your customer service person was amazingly prompt in getting back to me. He said there was a service order put in for it, A.I.M. as in Mary, 861-981. He suggested that, you know, it would take at least 30 days for consideration in terms of getting permission to remove this many trees, and most especially finding money in some kind of budget. Hopefully PG&E might be able to- I don't know how these things work, and I know it's going to be a tremendously expensive thing, but hopefully maybe you can reach out to the state or the feds to help with this. Because it is a concern. I live near there, and anybody who lives near there is aware of the fire hazard that exists. So I don't know what the timeframe is, what is possible for removal of these trees, but I hope it gets put on your agenda and gets, at least the consideration gets expedited. That's all. I have pictures of the reservoir if you want to see the damage. It's pretty, it's pretty distressing.
President Lenny?
Yes.
This is Marguerite on the phone. Sorry for my lack of visual presence. I'm having some technical difficulties, and now I'm on a phone with 27% battery. But I just want to let folks from Arinda that are on the line know that I am here and I am listening and I am aware of this issue, and our staff is committed to diligently addressing the concerns and protecting our watershed and our water supply from fire as much as we are protecting our neighbors from, from fire. Those are co-equal, co-equal concerns for us.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker?
Yes, give me one moment, please. Okay, the next speaker is Yvette Rivera. I am going to unmute your line. You should be able to turn on your mic. All right, and your three minutes start now.
Thank you. I spoke at the board meeting this morning, and I'm just back to just review what I said this morning and just add one other item. I want to thank East Bay Mud for entering into a settlement agreement with me over litigation that I started around 2014, 2015. As of last Thursday, I think it's March 19th, 2021, that litigation is completely over. So I thank you. I also want to thank Governor Brown for passing the STAND Act. The STAND Act stands for Stand Together Against Non-Disclosure Act. And as a result of the STAND Act, all confidentiality and non-disparagement provisions in settlements are legal as of January the 1st, 2019. Because of the STAND Act, no one at East Bay Mud will be bound to confidentiality provisions, non-disparagement agreements, or any other document that denies employees the right to disclose factual information about unlawful acts in the workplace that include sexual harassment, discrimination, and retaliation. And I think we have to thank the Me Too movement for that. The last thing I just want to mention is that I'm going to be putting in a CPRA Act, Document Request Act, for all employment settlement agreements that were entered into by East Bay Mud and approved by the board directors between January the 1st, 2019, to March the 15th, 2021. And that's all I have. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rivera. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Kristin Font, and I am going to unmute your line. You should be able to turn on your mic. Kristin, hi, your time starts now.
Great. Thank you, board directors. My name is Kristin Font. I've been an East Bay Mud employee since 2016. This is my first time making a public comment at a board meeting, and I wish it was under different circumstances. I'm here today to inform you of a recent incident regarding intermittent work schedules and to request your support in resolving an unfair and potentially discriminatory decision affecting me directly. For decades, some East Bay Mud employees have worked intermittent schedules, which allow for working between 20 and 40 hours a week on a voluntary basis, while salary and benefits packages are prorated. These opportunities are listed in the staffing plan and are available for certain East Bay Mud departments, and mine is one of them. Prior to taking maternity leave last year, my supervisor verbally agreed to my return under intermittent status and approved it in a written memo dated August 2020. After the memo's approval, I spent seven months assured that my return to work as a new mother during the pandemic would include intermittent flexibility. However, on March 1st, 2021, my very first day back from maternity leave, I was brought into a meeting with my supervisor, division manager, and an HR regulatory coordinator. In this meeting, I was informed for the first time that I was denied intermittent leave by HR and that I must return to work full-time immediately. This is despite the verbal discussions and approved documented agreements described above. I interpret this as a discriminatory or retaliatory action against women, new mothers, and working mothers. I feel like I have been penalized for having a child. My experience is unfortunately not an isolated incident. In early March of this year, my colleague Jennifer Koo was also denied intermittent status after being promised it in a similar capacity. I was excited and proud to join East Bay Mud in 2016 because I believed it is an organization that values its employees and work-life balance. However, denying flexible work schedules, especially during an unprecedented global pandemic, is in direct violation with the district's four core values, particularly respect and integrity. This situation has been a huge source of stress in my life. Childcare is essentially unavailable at this time for infants, and I was unable to plan my life accordingly while I leave due to this unexpected reversal. I've exhausted all of my options, which is why I'm speaking here with you today. The East Bay Mud employee demographic is few and younger, and many are in the family planning stages of life. If East Bay Mud is serious about being a great place to work, please ensure that there are flexible work options for parents. The risk of not fixing this problem will be an employee retention issue, especially among mothers. The New York Times says nearly 3 million American women have left the workforce since the pandemic started. Please don't let East Bay Mud contribute to the statistic. I would greatly appreciate your timely support to restore my intermittent status that was promised to me and consider flexible work options for other struggling mothers and parents. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Font. Clifford, I wonder if there's something that we could, some information that we could get after the meeting that might shine a little light on this for us to understand better?
Yeah, give me an opportunity to look into this particular issue, and then I can update the board via an info memo.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Fogarty. I'm going to unmute your mic, and you should be able to speak. And your time starts now.
Hello, board. My name is Matt Fogarty. I live in Arinda, and I enjoy hiking. This, I want to talk about the hiking permit system. So I believe the permit system is designed to exclude poor people from hiking, and the permit is not about raising money for East Bay Mud and likely costs money. And heavily armed police have been used to enforce this unfair permit system, and it really spoils the whole idea of like taking a nice hike. So number one, the permit system is designed to exclude poor people from hiking. To hike, you need to go online and pay money for a permit. The permits are not expensive if you have money, with a five-year permit costing 1.7 cents per day. But if you go for a daily hike, it's 180 times more expensive at $3, plus it takes time and you need to be online. So the permit system excludes the poor, the non-technical, and the people who don't live close enough to the trails to make it worthwhile to purchase a five-year ticket. So the people who don't buy the permit get cited by the police and pay a penalty of around $100. Is this the point of the system, to exclude and punish the poor? Number two, this permit system is not about raising money. Revenue from permit sales was not even included in the financial plans presented to the finance committee this morning. It was not even there. Like, the revenue raised likely does not pay for the staff or website, and certainly does not cover the cost of unionized police officers earning overtime, hassling hikers on a Sunday. How much does it cost to hire two policemen per day with SUVs? So East Bay Mud is likely losing money by having this exclusionary system. Number three, heavily armed police hassling hikers to enforce this unfair permit system. On Sunday, I went for a hike from Rancho Laguna Dog Park in Moraga. I left my phone in my car as I like to relax in nature, and started the hiking trail with two armed policemen in two SUVs. I turned back, got, and got my phone. The engines were running on the SUVs, and the cops shouted through their car loudspeaker for me to show my permit, but not to approach. I flashed my phone from 12 feet away, and the cops waved me on. So what were the cops doing there? Obviously, they're not checking the validity of the permits as they could not see the permit. So what were they checking? What looked like from 12 feet away? The cops were not protecting the environment as they were running their SUVs and using loudspeakers in nature. I thought it was totally inappropriate, and it really spoiled my hike to be hassled by these park cops. I called the EPRD dispatch for my hike and spoke to the superintendent Patty Gershnek yesterday. They say that they have a contract to enforce the permits when just doing their jobs. I said, I said to her that they were not checking permits as they couldn't do this from 12 feet away. There was no point in this stop, just to hassle people and try and spoil the day for the unfortunate people who don't have a permit, who don't flash a nonexistent permit from their phones. So I'm asking you, EdMud, to stop the madness. Stop excluding your customers from hiking and relaxing. Stop wasting money on armed cops to hassle hikers. Stop your exclusionary policies that discriminate against the poor, the non-technical, and the people who don't live locally. EdMud makes a big deal about wanting to be more inclusive and bringing some level of equity to your organization, even hiring professionals equity in their titles. If EdMud really cares about equity and inclusion, please change your hiking permit policy and take the armed cops off the hiking trails.
Mr. Fogarty, your time is up. Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, that's it. So please, please, please get rid of the hiking permit system and just make it free for people to hike. The whole thing is a sham.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fogarty. Mr. Fogarty seemed to raise, raise a number of issues that are worthy to be addressed in some fashion or another. Clifford, do you want to suggest how to-
Yeah, I did receive, I did receive an email from Mr. Fogarty. I haven't had a chance to read it in detail. Give me an opportunity to look at this, and I'll think about the best way to bring it back to the board for discussion.
All right.
Clifford, this is Marguerite Young. I also, I received the email from Mr. Fogarty and actually penned a short response today. I don't know if he's had a chance to look at it, but I'd like to, you know, be kept in the loop on what you're thinking about with this as well.
Of course.
Okay, we have two more speakers for public comment. Next is Latonya Hawkins. I am going to unmute your line. You should be able to tone on your mic. Okay, and your time starts now.
I wanted to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to be able to speak today. I really wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself. As you mentioned, my name is Latonya Hawkins, and my organization is Construction Resource Center, located in Oakland and also in Richmond. Though I submitted a formal letter of appreciation to all of you, I felt it was very important to thank all of you here on the board. To personally, I thank you for the support you've provided to our organization and our clients, which are small local contractors and local trade persons. Over the past year, we all realize how it's been a huge challenge for many, but with your support, we have been able to successfully offer all of our services online, and that includes our online trade classes, our one-on-one sessions with our consultants in various disciplines, our e-learning modules that we offer in English and Spanish. And this evening, we'll be honoring our 23 graduates in our seventh cohort of our 10-week project management program, to which you all are invited to attend. You will have Beverly Johnson that will be there as our guest speaker, who has been a supporter of us through East Bay Mud over the years and who is a representative on our industry advisory board and plays a major role in our evolving curriculum. So I wanted to be able to tell you that all of this is being done with your support, and on behalf of the team at Construction Resource Center, we thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to speak.
Thank you for taking the time to speak to us today. And, and thank you for the good work and the, you know, thanks for our work there. What, which, what time is the event, or what event is this again?
This is our certificate ceremony for our project management course, and it's at 8:00 PM this evening via Zoom. And I will be able to, or actually will send that information to Ms. Cole to distribute to the board, and we would love if any of you can attend.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and have a great day.
The board received a copy of the letter along with the speakers bureau during closed session, so if you check your email, you should have the letter along with the Zoom link. Our last public speaker is Charles Porgies, or Porges. Going to unmute your mic. Okay, and your three minutes start now.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the, and ladies, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I heard Mr. Fogarty's comments, and I would like to second them. I think that your policy on trails, especially during COVID, when so many people need to get out and about and find places to walk is an eminently sound comment, that you should review your policy and see if you can change it. And if you do change it, I would advise you to let the public know by disseminating the information by all means available. But that wasn't what I came here to talk to you about. I came here to talk to you about the dead pines that are surrounding not only San Pablo Reservoir, but throughout EdMud territory. I believe that this year, you are going to have to take down far more number of trees that are dead than you ever have in the past. And I believe that it is going to go to your planning commission, that is going to then plan, and then it's going to have to go to your budget committee, which will then have to budget. And I'm telling you that fire season is a couple of months away. It starts in June. You don't have much time, and I'm asking you if you can possibly find a way to expedite the removal of all of the dead pine trees that are on your property, please do so. I have sent an email. I hope that you have it in your records. I have been in dialogue with Ms. Young, who has assured me that she understands the severity of the problem and that it will be addressed or that it needs to be addressed. What I'm asking you to do is find a way to make it happen quickly. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Clifford, we had at least two speakers here who commented about the, the dead trees issue, and you, you know, made some brief comments this morning about that. I wonder if you might want to repeat those for those people who were not present at this morning session?
Yeah, of course, yeah. No, the issue of us being brought up has been going on for a while. We've had a program for decades to remove dead trees and really keeping up with the removal with the mortality of the trees. And there has been an increase, as the speakers have noted, that we've been observing. And we're actively working on this right now. We do have plans to update our board on our activities at the planning committee on April 13th, and then we'll also be speaking with the community on April 14th. So this is not something that, you know, we are just sitting and waiting to do something until we update the planning committee. This is something that staff has been actively working on for many years, and this year in particular with the increase in mortality. And I shared this morning that, on average, in the last 20 years, we've removed 250 trees annually. So far in December, we've already removed 229 trees. So staff has been aware of this for some time.
Doug, if I can just interject real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know that when I spoke at the Conacost de Meres Conference two weeks ago, I think it was then Amy Worth from Arinda brought this up, not about the dead trees, just about our interface and how we deal with cities and so on. And I did let her know that, you know, I think that we actually had a controlled burn, if I'm not mistaken. Now, we are trying to be proactive, and as Marguerite said, we do work with the communities, and, you know, we're fully committed to making sure that we do the right thing. So hopefully the folks in Arinda and elsewhere, because it's not just Arinda, this is an issue, understand that we take our responsibility seriously on this.
President Young, Mr. Porges has, you raised your hand again?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to make the board aware that from the photographs that I've seen, we're not talking about hundreds of trees. We're talking about thousands of trees, and that you really need to upscale your game to address the thousands of trees. And I'm hoping, I know that you've had a plan for years and that you are going probably about four, four times faster than usual, but I'm hoping that you're going to go 10 times faster than usual to clear what needs to be cleared in the next few months. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Marguerite, did you have another comment? Okay. Do we have any other public speakers?
There are no other public speakers.
All right, with that, then, we'll now move to the consent calendar. There are nine items for consideration. Any items that board members would like to have pulled from the consent item for consent calendar for discussion?
I would move the consent calendar.
I'll second Lisa's motion.
All right, moved by Director McIntosh, seconded by Director Coleman. We shall have a roll call vote on that, Madam Secretary.
Director Coleman?
Yes.
Director Katz?
Yes.
Director McIntosh?
Yes.
Director Mellon?
Yes.
Director Patterson? Director Young? You're on mute. Director Young, you're on mute.
God, I pressed star six like five times.
Okay.
Very frustrating. I was trying to speak. Yes.
All right, and President Lenny?
Yes. Director Young, did you have some other comment you wanted to make?
No, just that, that if you, we've cut as many trees in the last three months as we usually cut in a year, pretty much. So we are on a pace to cut at least 1,200 trees at this point. I don't know what the actual number will be, but we are taking it seriously. We have been taking it seriously, and we will be presenting at this Arinda Advisory Committee in April.
All right. Then we go directly to General Manager's report.
Okay, I have a few items for you today. You know, as you're aware, we're still below average in precipitation for this year, and the 10-day forecast is pretty dry. Today, in addition to having Dave Briggs provide the normal water supply update, I'll have Mike Tognanini share with you the lessons learned from the last drought, as well as our water supply plan if it continues dry. And again, we'll do a similar update at the first board meeting in April that will culminate in our normal water supply and availability deficiency report on April 27th, and we're looking for some feedback today. So with that, Dave, take it away.
President Lenny and members of the board. And when Jeanetta says we're ready, I will begin. Can I control from here, Jeanetta? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll get you the latest numbers and our, and our best forecast available, and then I'll hand it over to Mike. So beginning with our water production values, which for this year are shown in red, and, you know, every spring is different, and this year is no different from the others. I think we've seen just enough rain and just cool enough temperatures to really keep water production low as we've gotten about halfway through spring so far. And I think as a result of that, we're going to downgrade our water production values that we're estimating for the entire year by one or two MGD. So we're pretty much tracking last year at this point, whereas just about every update I've given you prior to now had us 1% or 2% above last year. At this point, we're probably closer to last year with, with this spring being relatively cool. Now, of course, it has not been a wet spring, but it's just been a few tents here and a few tents there, and I think that's been just enough to keep people from the temptation of reaching for the irrigation controller. So this slide, Slide 4, shows our Up Country Forestation Precipitation Index, and it's through March 16th. And we're showing 2.41 inches in the month of March. We picked up 1.6 inches since last Thursday. So the March value right now is closer to 4, maybe a little above 4 inches for the month of March. And as Clifford mentioned, you know, he mentioned the 10-day forecast. I can do one better than that. The 15-day forecast is also showing a bunch of zeros. So it's safe to say that March will probably end at about 4 inches. So to date, we're looking at closer to about 23 inches for the year. And locally, we picked up about four tents in the last four or five days, so that brings us to about 8, 8.4 inches or so locally if we update the precipitation. So March is around 1.8 inches of rain locally. So far, if we assume that we don't get anything else in March, we're looking at the driest year that we have on record in, in the East Bay through the month of March. And we still have April and May to come, and then collectively, April and May together in June can essentially make up for much of the loss that we've- and June can essentially make up for much of the loss that we've had in February and March. But we're going to need a productive April and May and June to really make a dent in this thing, and I'll show you some more numbers later that'll get into that a little bit more detail. Our snowpack is the one outlier, and this is a single data point at 8,000 feet in the upper end of the watershed. But again, we're still relatively normal up there, but that's the only indicator we have that's in that category. Statewide, the snowpack is low. Central Sierra, again, is doing better than the other northern and southern parts of the Sierra. And today, the Bureau of Reclamation sent an announcement out that they are potentially not having water available for agricultural contractors this year due to the worsening hydrology. So that was a bit of a surprise and bad news for those contractors. Municipal and industrial contractors, our allocations have been unchanged, so ours remains at 55% of our contractual value. And the state water project also walked back its allocation from 10%. It's now down to five, so I think we can expect a very active and robust transfer market heating up here very quickly. Our storage values, total storage, 551,000 acre feet for the entire system. The last two or three weeks since March 1st, we've been trying to refill our reservoirs locally. We've made a lot of progress at Breones. We've made less progress at Upper San Leandro Reservoir. So if you go out there, you'll notice that it's probably 12 or 14 feet below where it normally is this time of year, but we will hopefully make progress there in the next couple of months and get that a little bit higher as we move water from up-country down here. Okay, so Slide 9 is showing the precipitation up-country, and 2021 is the bar on the far left, and the other 10, the 10 lowest years are also shown to the rest of the bars. So if I update this slide right now for 2021, we are actually sitting closer to 23 inches of precipitation up-country. So we are at or possibly slightly above 1977 at this point. So at least we've avoided that dubious distinction of being the lowest precip year on record up-country. So next, we'll try to reel in 1976. So with a dry hydrology, and by dry, I mean a 90% level of exceedance, meaning statistically 90% of the years that we have on record are wetter. For that dry hydrology, we should pick up another three inches or so. That'll still get us to be one of the lowest precip years on record up there. A median hydrology, essentially, we're talking about April and May at this point and June. Median hydrology adds another six or seven inches, still going to put us in the bottom 10 club, but at least get us, you know, out of the driest years on record conversation. And when we get this into this alternative format here on Slide 10, looking at our projected storage, these numbers, even though they were computed last week and we got a little bit of rain in the last few days, they're more or less still accurate. So a 90% or dry hydrology sequence from here will get us to about 460,000 acre feet of carryover storage at the end of September. The median gets us above 500. So that is, there's still certainly a chance that if April, May, and June are average, we will be above 500,000 acre feet by the end of September. But it just doesn't feel like we're going to be on that median hydrology. We have not seen median hydrology in quite some time. It just, we get the sense that we're going to remain dry and be below 500, but we truly don't know. We can't see much about April and May and June. We can't really see beyond the next two weeks with any level of accuracy. And just for, and just for the record, if we were to receive zero precipitation for the rest of the year, we would end up at 420,000 acre feet of carryover storage. So this is my last slide before I hand it over to Mike, and just showing the last 10 years of carryover storage on this graphic, Slide 11. And you see, as we went through the last drought in 2012 through 2015, year over year, we ended our carryover storage with a lower quantity, and we began to supplement our carryover storage with the supplemental supply from Freeport with CVP water and transfer water. As we now look at 2020 and 2021, we will almost certainly not reach 2020 levels of carryover storage this year. And right now, we are projecting, the dry projection would get us, as I mentioned on the previous slide, about 460, but if we do have median hydrology in April, May, and June, we could push that all the way up to 530,000 acre feet of storage. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mike, who will talk about our options from here and the lessons learned from last year, or last drought.
Thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, President Lenny and members of the board. I'd like to share with you all just kind of a reminder of what we learned from the last drought, and specifically focus on our access to CVP water. What this table shows is that our CVP allocation between 2014 and 2015 was dramatically reduced from about a 50% allocation down to a 25% allocation. And I'll just say, from a planning perspective, when we've done our long-term water supply planning previously in WSP 2040 and in the Freeport EIR and in design of that facility, we had assumed a 50% allocation. So 25% was lower than what we had anticipated we would be seeing. Meanwhile, if you look at the cost of water, CVP water does not change in cost between one year to the next dry years. In 2014 and 2015, it was about $75 an acre foot. It's higher now, it's about $127 an acre foot, but that price is not expected to change year to year. What does change is how much CVP water is actually available in a second year of a drought. And then you can see what happens in the transfer market. In 2014, 2015, there's a big difference in what we paid to Placer County Water Agency for water transfers that we obtained, and then we also accessed the transfer spot market in 2015, paid market prices of about $700 an acre foot. And if you look at the final row on this table, in 2014, although we were allocated 66,000 acre feet of CVP water, we decided to limit our diversion to 23,000 acre feet, thinking that there would be water available the next year. But what turned out to happen in 2015 is that our allocations were cut. So we were down to 33,000 acre feet of CVP plus transfers. And so instead of paying a lower cost for the water in 2014, we paid a much higher cost for water in 2015. So the lesson learned here is that CVP allocations are not reliable, especially in the second year of a drought, and that transfer costs can go up dramatically when supplies are limited, as they did in 2015. Next slide. So a couple of considerations when we look at this year. First of all, as the board is aware and has been reported by Dave previously, our Central Valley Project MNI allocation this year is 55%. That equates to about 73,000 acre feet of water available. Placer County Water Agency is still determining where they are on the flow schedule in terms of how much water they're required to release as a part of their Sacramento Water Forum commitments. But approximately, we could expect that they would have about 10,000 acre feet available for transfers if we were interested. Another important number to keep in mind, East Bay Mudd's Freeport capacity is approximately 8,500 acre feet per month, which means if you're looking to divert 73,000 acre feet, our CVP allocation this year, for example, that would require us to divert water through Freeport from June through February. As a reminder, the CVP contract year runs from March through February. So that 73,000 acre foot allocation goes until the end of February 2022. And of course, we have no prediction yet on what 2022 water availability will be. So when we put together our plan for dealing with drought and dry year supplies, our water supply planning considers that it's a combination. We have to look at both demand reduction and supplemental supply. It's how our program has been set up, and it's how we performed in the last drought. The expectation would be that we may be looking at voluntary rationing in a range of 10 to 15% based on Dave's latest projections. And in addition to that, we would be considering using Freeport, purchasing CVP water up to 73,000 acre feet. We don't necessarily have to take the full amount, but that would be the maximum. And in the event that CVP allocations go down, we would also be, potentially be able to access Placer County Water Agency transfers if we were to make that decision in the next month or so. So our next steps with respect to making decisions about operation of Freeport. In early April, we'll have the results of the April 1st DWR snow survey, which will provide for us, you know, detailed accounting, at least from DWR's perspective, on what the runoff would be expected to be on the McKelley. At the next board meeting, April 13th, we will come to you to talk again about water supply, but also to lay out these water supply alternatives in more details with costs. And then at the April 27th board meeting, as per usual, we'll be presenting a water supply availability and deficiency report and asking the board to consider if conditions warrant and we continue in dry conditions, the possibility of demand reduction and supplemental supply actions. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Director Coleman?
Great, thank you, both David and Mike, for the presentations. Appreciate it. Couple of quick questions. The 10% cutback, which I think is reasonable approach, what year is it based on? Because that was not stated. It was stated whether it was last year or, you know, a certain time. So what year is that based on?
I believe that the 10% reduction is still based on the 2013 demand levels, but that is, again, something for the board to consider in the April 27th board meeting. It can be adjusted.
Thank you. And I know you can't predict the 2022, but if I, as, I'm a weather nerd, okay? I fully admit it. And Australia's been in a drought for several years, as have we. Now there are major floods, as of what I'm reading today. Is there any correlation between what happens in Australia and what happens here because of the jet streams? And again, we can't make our forecast and demand decisions based on what's happening in Australia today because we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but is there any correlation to that?
I think there are certainly correlations at the global scale that, as you see climate change and you see variations in weather patterns, but what you cannot directly correlate are specific precipitation events that might occur on the McKelley watershed. I don't think at that scale, you can draw a straight line from conditions in Australia to conditions in the McKelley. It might apply more broadly to the state or the region or the Western US, but to make a conclusion of what will happen on the McKelley based on what's happening in Australia, I think, would be a stretch. I don't know if Dave has...
And maybe I'll just...
I agree with that assessment. I was just curious if there was a correlation between what happens there and what happens on the West Coast of the United States.
Okay, I was just going to quickly add and just reinforce. I mean, there's two strong, you know, signals. You have the Enzo, which is a, you know, three to five-year cycle, and then the Pacific-Tecateo Oscillation, which is about 20, 25-year cycle. And, you know, that has been analyzed extensively and really not enough, as Mike had mentioned, to draw that straight line between a particular event in one country and what we might see the following year.
Great, thank you. And to follow, and I appreciated the description of the first year of a drought and getting water from our CVP contractor or Placer County or Yuba County, for that matter, Yuba County water. I guess I'm just stating a thing. I would hope that as we're going into this, we need to assume, worst-case scenario, I think, that we need to, hopefully, we're in discussions with the CVP, Yuba County, or Placer County on potential water transfers. And I thought, if I'm not mistaken, aren't we with some of the work that's going on with local reservoirs, I know in Valley Water and Los Vercros being enlarged, some of the reservoirs are not being, we have agreements in place, at least with Conacosta Water, where they're not going to be filling up as high as they might have been due to their dams being redesigned? And what are, if that's the case, what are our agreements with them to assist during a drought?
So specifically on the topic of Los Vercros, we, the board just approved an agreement to study how and whether East Bay Mudd could support Conacosta Water District's water needs during the construction of an enlarged Los Vercros dam. So we need to look at that and with respect to customer operational impacts to East Bay Mudd, what can we do? What will we not be able to do? Because it's a construction period and then a refill period for a Los Vercros reservoir that's going to occur over a period of, say, three to four years.
So assuming, because of the agreement, which is the right thing to be doing, working with CCW Day as a regional partnership and agency, would they be willing to help fund potential CVP or Placer County water as we bring it into our system?
I think we could certainly look at alternatives to supply, but we have, in our agreement with Conacosta Water, asked them to develop their own source of water for, during that period of time when we might be supporting them. So we would just be a wheeling entity. We would not be selling them water from our own source.
Again, I just would hope that, again, thank you, great presentation. I wish us hope that we're entering into dialogue now rather than waiting too long if we need to bring additional water into our service area. So thank you.
Director Katz?
Thanks. So I, I'm keeping an open mind about whether this is the most appropriate thing for the district to do in the interest of whether this is necessary for us to be able to assure adequate water supply in light of the sustainability impacts of using Freeport and wheeling that water through. There is an energy cost, that water does otherwise flow to the delta, so it is a decision that I take very seriously. I'm interested in the slide that we saw during Dave's presentation that indicated kind of that, those three scenarios, the 90, 50, 10. I have a question about that. I noticed that as we were headed into the summertime, there was a big deviation between the 10% and the 50% scenario. And I'm talking a lot before we get to see that slide, so thanks. Yeah, right there. So I'm noticing that the real dip, the real deviation between the middle line and the bottom line starts at around June. And I'm wondering why that is, because it really shouldn't be explained by heavy precipitation during that time period. Of course, it has to do with hydrology. So I'm wondering, how much do we know about the hydrology in the watershed? Or, you know, how much do we know about the reasons why those lines deviate? Because it would seem to me like a lot of that gets baked into the snowpack, a lot of that gets baked into other hydrology factors earlier in the spring. And where are the numbers that give us those indicators there? Because I'm not sure if we saw kind of those inputs in this presentation.
Thank you, Director Katz. Yeah, so I've got the slide up here for your review, and you're correct. Once we get into July, there's not much hydrology that hasn't revealed itself yet. So a lot of the deviation, it starts to begin that late into the water years due to the flow release schedule or the year type. It might depend on how much runoff we get out of the McKelley watershed. So the deviation starts to appear once we start to factor in what the release schedule is from the dams based on the year type that might become known at that time. Does that answer your question?
It does qualitatively, although I'm really interested in whether we can get to some quantitative predictions, given that, you know, we're not trying to predict the weather, we're trying to predict the hydrology for this question. So we should be able to get to some reasonable estimates, and I'm not sure what information we have access to.
If I'm getting your question correctly, the one part that we don't know is essentially the hydrology to come in April, May, and June. That's the one variable, and we statistically look at the possibilities that, based on the past, that could occur... that could occur in the next three months or so. That really is the X factor. All of the rules, low dye decree, JSA year type, release schedules, et cetera, temperature issues in the dams, all of that is relatively deterministic. Really, the only unknown is the, is the hydrology in the next three months.
And maybe I'll just quickly add to this. You know, within our watershed and what, what we know pretty well is there's a very strong correlation between rainfall, snow pack and runoff. And so what Dave is saying is, you know, we don't know forward looking, you know, what that's going to look like. So what you see in the projections is if we had the 10% or 50% or 90% based on our history and, and that very strong correlation, this is what we can expect given our filling and release requirements. So, you know, Dave's group and the water supply engineering group, they have, you know, 100 years of data and runoff data to base these projections on. And, you know, for anybody that, you know, knows statistics, that correlation factor is like 0.95, if I recall correctly. It was a very strong correlation.
And under our rates and charges, will, will the, will the Freeport surcharge take effect when we, if we do decide to, to draw?
It, it depends on what stage we're in, but, you know, so right now, what Mike and Dave have showed, I think we would still be in stage one and there would not be a surcharge. If it, if it gets as bad as Dave described where we get, you know, down to 420, then we would be in stage two and there will be a charge. And it's graduated as we, as we progress up in the deeper stages, higher stages.
Thank you. Well, yeah, if, if it, to summarize my thoughts on this then, if we're, if we're in something far beyond the 90% exceedance and we're headed towards the 420 mark, as you say, we, we will need to take action. I, I would, I would agree that we need to draw from Freeport in that, in that kind of instance. It does, this does look like a, a close call. And that may mean that we're not ready to decide yet, but it is not too early to start thinking about what are the important considerations. If we consider this at a, at a subsequent board meeting, I'd like to start to see more about what, what are we? Is there a snowpack depth or concentration measurement? Or when is that measurement about to occur? That information would be really helpful. I'm, I'm not recalling the borderline between stage one and stage two in our guidelines. And that mark is, is pretty important. You know, I would, I, I think that, you know, we are, our, our community is still reeling from a, a very significant emergency with COVID-19. And it would be, if we can avoid having dual emergency communications at once because we're able to provide those, those assets, it would be good to avoid that and to have enough carryover storage in the, in the following year that we don't have that sense of emergency. But, but I, I also do really have a lot of hesitation about unnecessarily using Freeport. I would really like to avoid it if we don't have to.
Are there any other board comments, questions? All right.
Thank you for your feedback. Next, we have our coronavirus update. And really, the biggest change since the last board update on the ninth was that the California Department of Public Health made a change to include utility and disaster service workers as emergency service workers under Phase 1B. There's a lot of other information that Dave will share right now.
Okay, thank you and good afternoon again. So we'll give you our update here on our management of the pandemic. And as is typical, the state updates all of its county data on Tuesday around midday. And right now, all of our operational counties are in red with the exception of San Waken County, which is still in purple. There's a, I think, nine counties in the purple tier, most of them in the Central Valley. Alameda County qualifies for orange at the moment, but we haven't been in red long enough to make that jump. But we could, in Alameda County, move to the orange tier next week if things continue to progress. Most of the metrics continue to improve, but at a relatively slow rate. Alameda County is improving slowly, more of a, more pace at the state level. But I'm a little concerned that 21 other states outside of California are heading in the other direction, hopefully, just temporarily and hopefully, just as a result of spring break or what have you. And hopefully, the, the pace of vaccinations will overcome everything nationally and get us all going in the right direction. But a little bit of a concern that we're not, and we're more than a concern. We are not out of this yet, but things are, are heading in the right direction in general. So far, no operational impacts here at the district. And to give you a sense of our latest numbers, we had our 77th positive, I think it was yesterday or the day before. And we're still at 12 contractor positives. Three of our employees are not at work right now as they remain in isolation and recovering from COVID. And I apologize for the, the numbers being out of date, but just wanted to give you the latest. We have about 23 employees quarantining right now. The 77th positive that we had a couple of days ago did result in a relatively large quarantine. And the other employees that are in quarantine are symptomatic at this point and may or may not be positive. So you can see in the graphic at the bottom, we, we are certainly off the peak for COVID positives at East Bay Mud with six in February. We're actually at six right now at March with one week left. So we have kind of plateaued out here a little bit at the district. And hopefully, as I'll get into in the next slides, with the pace of vaccination really increasing, we can finally start to drive this even lower. So just with respect to that, on March 11th, the state announced more definitive terms for who does and does not qualify under Phase 1B, which most counties are rapidly trying to vaccinate right now. Utility and disaster service workers were deemed to be part of Phase 1B. We didn't hesitate. We notified our employees immediately after we received that information that they should get in line and, and get vaccinated as quickly as possible. I have heard from literally dozens of employees. They, they each have their own story. They live in different places. They have different healthcare providers. They each have had a different challenge getting vaccinated, but I think nearly all of them have been able to make an appointment, at least that I'm aware of. And so employees are rapidly getting vaccinated as near as I can tell. Statewide, I think we're up to over 15 million doses into arms throughout the state. It's over 2 million a week, I think, at this point. I believe the state is waiting for a large shipment of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which should arrive in April, which is really only seven or eight days away. And this is, it continues to be a very fluid environment. I think more and more counties are developing a more local approach to who is getting the priority for the vaccine. Contra Costa County just announced yesterday that 50 and over now qualify. The governor mentioned, I believe recently, that by early May, anybody over the age of 16 can get in line in the state of California. So it's happening very quickly and it's, it's good to see how rapidly this is rolling out here. We are continuing to do the best we can at the management level to allow our employees or bring information to our employees that will encourage them to be vaccinated. We're hosting various educational sessions or brown bags where we can bring in information from healthcare providers and speakers who know what they're talking about, who talk on all sides of the issue. And will hopefully improve or increase our numbers for employee vaccination here at the district. So that is a big part of what we're doing right now. And the other big part of what we're doing right now is trying to craft a safe return to workplace plan. And we always, we continue to reinforce with our employees that all of the safety protocols need to necessarily remain in place despite the pace of vaccinations. Now, there may come a time when some rules may be different for those who have been vaccinated at an individual level or a community-wide vaccination level, that a community or a state or a county may have alternative health, health orders, depending on what percentage of the county has been vaccinated or the state or what have you. But we're not there yet. And when these changes do come, it'll create more challenges for us to implement the protocols. But we've adapted for a year now and we'll, we'll continue to do that. Our, our plan right now is focusing on what we can and cannot allow in the building in terms of occupancy. We'll incrementally increase that as time goes on. Part of our plan will address public access moving forward. And then we have signaled to our employees that telecommuting is available through June 18th, more or less at the end of school. Prior to June 18th, which is give or take three months from now, if things continue to improve, if we have all the safety measures in place, we may be able to allow more people to return to the building on a voluntary basis after June 18th. The, if the, if we're in yellow or better, we have to have more conversations about this at the SMT. But if the numbers are looking good and we've worked out all the safety logistics, we might be incrementally decreasing the amount of telecommuting available after June 18th. Part of the plan will also involve certainly conversations for the board's own plan. So we look forward to talking with you more about that shortly as we, as we learn more. And finally, my last slide, just as a follow-up from the last board meeting. Mike Toglini's staff audited various recreational areas weekend before last. And those numbers are shown here on the lower part of the slide, Slide 6, in terms of face covering compliance at various recreation sites, both locally and up country. So by and large, the, the compliance is very high. And just to remind the board that face coverings are not required for individuals outdoors who are at least six feet from other people who aren't, aren't in their household or who are dining. So it's not, it's not always easy to spot if you're looking at a group of people that may or may not be in the same social bubble. It's not always easy to spot compliance or lack of compliance, but we have done that and are confident that lately, the numbers have been pretty good. And, and Mike's staff also worked with East Bay Parks to increase patrols at Lafayette Reservoir, which, which are probably also responsible for those relatively good numbers. So I will stop there and take any questions if you have any.
Go ahead, Frank.
Did you say we had 23 people quarantined right now?
Yeah, it's, yes, Director Mellon. It's, it's, it's a number that's changes by the day. And usually, at the beginning of the week, the number's a little bit higher after we get out of the weekend. As we approach the end of the week, the number tends to drop. But yeah, the, the best answer I have right now is about 23 people are quarantined.
Okay, thank you.
Director Coleman?
Great, thank you. Good report again, David. Thank you. It's encouraging to see the numbers. I'm glad to see the numbers of the reservoir are where they are, since I did raise that two weeks ago. I guess I'll be very curious to see the plan as it develops for returning to work, not only for employees but for board members, since I think everybody in the board probably pretty much now qualifies for a shot. Maybe not Andy, but everybody else does. And I do know that if we have employees that live, that work in Contra Costa, but they live in another county, they're now eligible as well under the county guidelines in Contra Costa. If you work in the county and you're over 50, you can, you can get a vaccination. So hopefully, folks are aware of that and people will take this up. I'm just going to make a, a statement. I believe everybody should get vaccinated. I understand there may be for religious or medical reasons, some people cannot get vaccinated. But I think it's morally incumbent for us as board members and for our employees to get a vaccination, not only to get us to that herd level of where there's a safety where we can get somewhat back to normalcy at some point in the near future, but where we can start operating again the way we did operate and functioning the way we did function. Doing these Zoom things are fine, but I'm really tired of it, to be honest. And I just would hope that, that we'll maybe get a confidential memo from Clifford. I don't know on that issue. But we just, that's my personal opinion. And it's to all the employees, please, if you're eligible, get vac, you are eligible. So please get vaccinated. There's no reason not only, not only your family, but the other family members of East Bay Mud employees not to.
And I'll just quickly respond. As far as the safe return to work plan, we will be updating the board at the second board meeting in April.
Thank you.
I've known folks that are starting to get the Johnson vaccine now too, John.
Yeah, I get mine. I don't know which one next week at Kaiser. I'm not sure which, I think it's whatever. It's one of the Pfizer or Moderna, I guess.
No, the Kaiser's got Johnson showing up there also.
Oh, cool.
And mine went into Kaiser thinking she was going to get one of those. And then there was a line for Johnson. And she walked down that line and had her shot and she loves it. She calls it one and done.
Yeah, I mean, it, it'll be nice to get to that point where enough people are vaccinated where we don't have to wear the mask once we get to that point where it's safe for people to congregate and socialize. And work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave. And I have two more quick items. One is fun and one is very much serious. So the first one, that's a little more fun, but back in July, while staff up country was responding to a boat grounding incident at Comanche Reservoir, one of our staff, a ranger naturalist, Greg Franchek, noticed a really unique geologic formation surrounding the area. After the incident, he returned and discovered a lot of fossilized trees in the area. And with the guidance of geologists and other geologist associates, they further surveyed the area and they found fossilized vertebrate remains. So we did seek out expertise from paleontologists, including Dr. Shapiro from Chico State. And with the support from rangers, Dr. Shapiro performed an assessment on many of the fossils and found that they dated back to the Miocene period about five to 10 million years ago. And those fossils included mastodons, gompheseers, rhinos, camels, horses, birds, fish, turtles, tortoises, tappers, pronghorns and wolverines. The site has a lot of scientific significance and a lot of paleontologists and geologists have been volunteering, volunteering their time to assess the site. I bring this to your attention because while we haven't been publicly limiting a kind of our publicity for security reasons, we do plan to come to the board on April 27th to share information about what we've discovered. But of course, as more people are learning about this one, there's increased likelihood that there's going to be media attention. And so we are preparing a press release and I want you to be aware of that. But more information to follow, but I didn't want you to see this in the press without me sharing it with you first. And if there's no question, the second item, I guess that is, is more serious, but it's been really been very disturbing with all the anti-Asian, anti-Asian Pacific Islander issues that have been occurring. I really do appreciate the board's leadership on racial equity and justice, diversity, equity and inclusion. I, I do want to let the board know that at the next meeting, when Derry Moten normally does a presentation, I do plan to bring a resolution for the board to consider to support the Asian Pacific Islander community, speak up against all the hate crimes. And, you know, I do want to let you know that we are meeting tomorrow with the Asian Pacific Employees Association, the Black Employee Network, other staff. We reach out to the unions to help draft this resolution. And I do plan to bring it at the next board meeting. And I did share with all district employees last week just my personal thoughts on this particular issue. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Okay?
I have a question, but I do end in with you in terms of the resolution going forward. And we did have a moment of silence before our finance and administration committee this morning, relevant to that issue, because we wanted to make sure that the audience out there that watches us is well aware that we are aware of the surround. In particular, we have the Asian major community. It's our neighbor and it's right here in the neighborhood. And this is where several of the actions against the Asian community took place. Finally, I want to say, related to that, the Atlanta, Georgia situation, the Boulder, Colorado situation. Colorado situation, all of those were items that I included. And Clifford, I'd be happy to share or help in any way I can as you put that together.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Clifford, and thank you for taking the initiative on that, and thank all the employees who are part of it. We, we know that this is a, a, a very integral part of our, what we do as a public water agency, as private community citizens, to look out for each other. So thank you for taking care of that or dealing with that. We'll now move to reports and director comments, minutes from the March 9th. Planning and legislative human resources committees are included in the agenda packet. We can now receive the report from today's finance and administration committee.
Yes, the finance and administration committee did meet this morning, and I wanted to say that the monthly investment transaction report, a good one, was thoroughly reviewed, and that the committee moved it forward in, in a positive manner. It appeared as item eight on the consent calendar and is well into the record. The electronic bill payment presentation was heard by the committee, and the committee did approve and recommended it to the full body. That's the extent of my report today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Patterson. Other items for future consideration, please submit items to the general manager if you have anything for future consideration. We're now at director comments. Any director comments? All right, then. Our next meeting in the board will be held Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, at 1:15 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.